Yep, one second.
All right, hold the second.
Yep.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to recognize Board Member Peter Scher, Dad to Audrey, Georgia, and Hayden, all Greenwich Public School students. Thank you for your three years on the RTM, and we're now 12 years on the Board of Education. And in 50 years in our community, we've only had one other who has provided that level of service to the students of Greenwich. Peter, you have been the voice of parents. You always ask hard and insightful questions. You have your finger on the pulse of our community. We understand and appreciate what it takes to serve and to do the work in this public office. Peter, you have earned our gratitude, and Awa deserves great to spend more time with your wife Karen. And on behalf of the Connecticut General Assembly, it is my honor to present this citation for your service to our community. Thank you, Peter Scher. Before we call up Steve, if you don't mind, Harriet O'Rourke sent a note, and so I just wanted to read that. Steve, as your working role at Georgia Pavilion, he said, "I was hoping to attend today's Board of Ed meeting and personally thank the outgoing members for their service to our town. However, today is Dualling, the most important festival in Indian culture, and I will be celebrating it with the family this evening, so I'm starting with this important moment. I know the legislative members will be there, and we have citations from the Connecticut General Assembly, but I really appreciate if you could read them. I wish I could be there in person today. First, let me wish everyone, especially those with a connection with Indian culture, a happy Dualling, which is a festival of light, a festival which celebrates the victory of good over evil. A big thank to Peter Scher and Peter Bernstein for their long service to the Board of Education in our town. I wish you both continued success in all of our endeavors we pursue in the future."
I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to address the board. I'm Steve Maskers, there, representing the 150th district. And I've been speaking to you today as that state rep, but I'm also speaking to you as an 18-year member of the RTM. The majority of that time...
Thank you.
The majority of the time in service to the Education Committee of the RTM. And I've had the pleasure of working with Peter Bernstein over the years, with his tremendous dedication and service both to his community in Byron and now as the Chair of the Board of Ed. I can't think of a more dedicated servant and volunteer as a servant of our community. Someone whose work to reach a consensus through some of the most difficult times our community has faced. I am proud to be able to present you with this. I thank you for your years of service. I thank you for what you've done during the course of the pandemic. I salute your dedication. I don't know, given how difficult the years have been, how I could have done it, and I really want to thank you from the bottom of my heart.
From Bosa, a late Karen person, yes, okay, we have Ms. Adrianne Hirsch Klein and Ms. Angela Schmidt. Good evening, everyone. Hi, Angela. Good evening, Chairman Bernstein, members of the board, Dr. Jones, and our entire school community. My name is Adrianne Klein, K-12 E-Sol Languages Coordinator and current co-president of Bosa, the Greenwich Organization School Administrator, serving alongside Angela Schmidt, who's online. On behalf of my co-president Angela Schmidt and the entire Bosa organization, we wanted to take a moment to thank Chairman Peter Bernstein and Board Member Peter Scher for their many years of service to our Board of Education and our school community. Thank you for motivating us and challenging us to answer hard questions and continue to set high expectations for our students, as well as for establishing and reinforcing board policies that prioritize students' academic and social-emotional needs. Chairman Bernstein, we appreciate your important contributions to our school community, which include serving as Board Chair for the last three years and Board Member for the last eight years since 2013, chairing the Negotiations Committee in 2020 while serving on it in 2013, and from 2017 to 21. We also acknowledge your hard work as part of the New Lebanon Building Committee for six years, and the Policy Governance Committee in 2017. Finally, thank you for your service as Board Liaison to the BET Budget Committee, the RTM Education Committee, Cardinal Field Visibility Study Working Group, the Greenwich Alliance for Education, Greenwich High School Student Government, and the Greenwich Scholarship Association. And finally, on behalf of proud Principal of North Miami is Angela Schmidt. Schmidt, we have truly appreciated your support and dedication to continuous improvement for every student and your commitment to building safety. On behalf of North Miami's school, we truly appreciated your efforts to get us back to our building as quickly and as efficiently as possible. Bosa wishes you the best in your future endeavors. Mr. Peter Scher, we appreciate your significant contributions to our school community as well, which include serving as Board Chair in 2017 and as a Board Member for over a decade since 2009, chairing the Negotiations Committee for seven years, the Strategic Plan Committee from 2020 to 21, and the Summer School Committee in 2017. We also acknowledge your hard work as part of the Budget Committee for the last three years from 2018 to 21, as well as your service as a Board Liaison to the BET RTM Education Committee, the Town of Greenwich Board of Parks and Rec, and the District Curriculum Committee. Thank you so much for your advocacy of our building projects and for the passion you demonstrated in your commitment to the Greenwich community. On behalf of my co-president Angela Schmidt, we wish to thank you for your efforts during our contract negotiations over the years and for your ongoing support of the North Miami's school community. Thank you for your help in getting us back into the building as quickly as possible. Best of luck, Peter, in your future endeavors. And as a party gift... Angela, did you want to add anything? Or please speak out.
Um, I just... Okay, hold on. I second everything.
Sorry, one second. Yes, Michael. Angela, can you try now?
Okay. Um, I think...
Okay. Angela, try it.
Hello? Are we good?
Angela, why don't you try now?
Okay, are we there? Are we good? Okay, I would like to reiterate what Adrianne said. And thank you both for many years of outstanding leadership and your collaboration and support. Best of luck to both of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Angela.
Thank you both so much. We'd love to hear from GEI, I believe Lauren Morgan, can you speak on that question?
Good evening, Board Members, GCS Cabinet.
You don't have to hold down, it's flipped on, you can just talk. Okay.
All right. Good evening, Board Members, GCS Cabinet, GEI teachers, parents, and students. My name is Lauren Morgan, GEI Vice President of Secondary, speaking on behalf of GEI and Little Jerome, the students. President Jerome is unable to attend because she is officiating the FCS finals in field hockey. So I will present the thank you to our two retiring Board of Education members. Although Jerome has only been GEI President for the past three months in her second term, she has known and worked with both Chairman Bernstein for the past eight years and, just to share, the past 12 years in many roles and capacities. Will work with you both as Board Chairs and spent many long nights until the early morning during the negotiations. Will recalls that we have sat on opposite sides of the tables many times, but also knows that you both have volunteered your time to serve the Greenwich Public Schools, our administration, our staff, our students, and our Greenwich community, and the GEI thanks you greatly for that. Will also personally enjoy teaching your children, especially in your Project Adventure classes, and seeing you all at open houses. Thank you both for the many years of service. The GEI would like to present you with some gifts. First, we have a very rare collector's item, our Support Greenwich Teacher sign. We feel it's become a collective item because every time we put them out, somebody has taken one. Next, the GEI stress ball. Our apple, a shiny red reminder of our teacher's passion for our profession. Our souvenir T-shirts that were given to us from the Greenwich Alliance, but we wanted you to have one because they were super real for us. And last but not least, there are some refreshments, and they're not cool. Thank you both.
That was great, thank you, darling. Do you want to get your gift? Thank you. Next, can we have Brian Poglinus from PTA?
Good evening. The Council of Greenwich Parent and Teacher Associations would like to thank and recognize, we'll go a little bit out here, Megan Olson, Dr. Anne Francis, again, Peter Bernstein, and Peter Scher for the time, dedication, and effort they have unsophishly given to the Greenwich Public School District. Dr. Francis, thank you for stepping in for Ms. Olson. Your prior service on the board and continued involvement in our schools made for seamless transition. Ms. Olson, who's not here, but who's listening in, you made the most of a complex situation, providing leadership and direction to your fellow board members on how to attend board meetings remotely. I'm sure that at the time, you did not realize that you were at the forefront of the preparation for hybrid learning. Thank you for sticking with it and for your service to our district, and thanks to both of you for your work you did in your committees and liaison roles. And now we turn to Peter Scher and Peter Bernstein. When I told my wife that PTA Council President Mimi Duff had asked me to deliver these remarks, her response was, "Now, there's an opportunity." As I contemplated the 17 or so adjectives I could pair with that word, I had to laugh at the irony, me thanking you after both of you beat me in the election for this role in 2013. Let go and move on. Peter Bernstein and Peter Scher, what can I say? It seemed at times that you were so similar that we could barely tell you apart. You both served as Board Chairs and Negotiating Committee Chairs. You both were part of the creation and implementation of the district's first strategic plan, aided in introducing the 15-year master facilities plan, navigated through the school start time discussions, as well as discussions on field remediation for Hamilton Avenue, Central Middle School, and Western Middle School, and Greenwich High School, racial balance, and closing the achievement gap, not to mention uncounted versions of the budget and the related discussions with the BET, which I'm sure you all enjoy. And did I mention you both beat me for the board seat in 2013? So as you can see, we could mistake you for twins, and yet there's something about the two of you that I couldn't quite put my finger on that made you different. All kidding aside, PTA Council would like to thank Mr. Scher for 12 years. Yeah, 12 years of service tied for the most, as noted earlier, since at least 1980. And thank Mr. Bernstein for his eight years of service. For this thank you, I could do no better than to borrow from my predecessor Crooked Diamonds comments to the 2019 honorees. You have both kept your focus on what is best for our students and families while also maintaining fiscal responsibility. You have never been afraid to express your opinions, have asked thoughtful and pointed questions that helped PTA Council and our DPS families sports, and have shown that you view our students as individuals with different needs and different goals. PTA Council would like to send you off with our traditional thank you gift, a pen as a sign of academic achievement, personal appreciation, and respect. We hope that you use these pens to write the next exciting chapter in your lives. It has been PTA Council's privilege to work with you, and we wish you luck in your future endeavors. Thank you.
That's great. I think it's going to be hard to follow Brian Poglinus's roast, but why don't we turn it over to you, Dr. Jones?
Thank you, I'll keep it rather brief. First of all, to Mr. Scher, thank you for your service to Greenwich Public Schools. 12 years is a very long time to serve on the board. I grew up with a father who was Chair and served on the board, and I know how much time it takes away from your family. So thank you on behalf of Greenwich Public Schools for your service. Dr. Francis, you were on the Hiring Committee, and when I first started, then you went away. And just so forever grateful that you are willing to step back in again. And also, I just, from a heartfelt thank you, that you reached out during COVID in one of the hardest times to say what kind of duty to help, and I will never forget that, so thank you. To Mr. Bernstein, thank you for your service. I could not be more fortunate as a school superintendent to have had you as Chair during probably one of the most difficult times a school superintendent has worked for. And your leadership, not only just your calmness in our meetings that we have and setting the agendas, I'm just forever grateful for that, and your leadership also, just to help me understand a Greenwich way, this is a complex, so not always knowing which form and which meeting and where I'm supposed to be, and I'm going to miss you also, just keeping me on track, so thank you, and I hope you enjoy the time with your family.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Joe, have you heard from Fred yet? Okay, all right, so... What? Hold on.
Hello, Fred, I have you on the microphone at the Board of Ed meeting where you meant to be speaking. Hold on, let me put you on the speaker, hold on. All right, I hope you're prepared, here you go.
I'm driving right now, sending something off into the home soon, so I'll probably do a good thing for you now. If you can give me like five minutes, I'll fly right back in.
Hold on, we'll vote on that. Can we have a motion to give Fred five minutes? Motion has been seconded and voted approved, so five minutes, we'll wait for your call.
Thank you so much, see you then.
Thanks, Fred.
I can go on and on, this is fine. Okay. Um, so, a lawyer, a doctor, and a strategist, joint of Board of Education. And I feel like there's a joke here, but seriously, the various skill sets coming together on the shore, bringing different perspectives are important. And I know I appreciate sharing my time with the board with you. I say three, since I do want to spend just a moment on Dr. Gayton Francis. We said goodbye to once, but deserved an extra thing to come back upon my begging. Gayton, I had the pleasure of working with you for two years, and miss our caucus meetings where we would meet up at a restaurant, remember that? Pre-board meeting, pre-COVID. We saw a lot of restaurants throughout this town to go through the items before us. I was very struck by how Gayton listened, analyzed, and made a thoughtful decision. She has a giant heart, sometimes she cries. Cares deeply about our students and has been advocating for our students, even prior to her time on the board. She loves education, always researching the field in her limited free time. Clearly, this is a person who gives a lot to her community in the local position, and when we needed someone, steps up again and goes right back in. I will miss her as a colleague, but feel honored to assist her. Thank you, Gayton. Peter Scher. A few of us have said that 12 years is a lot for someone to go their time to a volunteer position, and I suspect it might be a record on serving on the Board of Ed. That was very kind of Peter and his family, since your family does make the sacrifice too, you all know that, to give his time to Greenwich Public Schools. I learned that back in 2009, Peter immediately joined and chaired the Negotiations Committee, serving there for eight of his 12 years. As a strategist, he spent most of his time on the strategic plan, and will be chairing for the past two years. He also served with me on the Budget Committee for the past few years. A lot of knowledge was built up clearly, and he was always more than willing to provide his wisdom to the newer members. Thank you for your service, Peter, and I wish you all a nice day to you. Peter served eight years on the board, and he might pull the record in that of being the most elected chairman to a Board of Ed with four years straight. That's impressive, and while he always says he's just one of eight when it comes to voting, there's a lot of work in serving as Chair. Having been his colleague for the past two, I can say he really gives it his all. Additionally, Peter has served on the Negotiations Committee for the last four years, chairing that as well in 2020. He was on the Policy Governance Committee and spent six years on the New Lebanon Building Committee. I think enough people mentioned that tonight, and though that meant a lot to you here. I didn't mention all the liaisons on roles for each member, since there are many, but I think Peter's favorite role at the liaison was the GHS student department. There will always be tough times in the Board of Ed, and I joked the other day that I look forward to the day where we're having heated debates over field again. But the past few years have been especially interesting and required a bit more effort. During that summer of 2020, Peter and I spent a lot of time on the phone, on Google meets with our colleagues, Dr. Jones, and the community, and I know I'm thankful we're partners doing very strong shows. I'm sure you will continue to be an advocate for our students, and especially official, but I serve my best. Thank you. I now have Bell. Yes, I know, Gayton already got one. I think the bell is great. Everyone always jokes about wanting to have a parking pass forever, which is really what you deserve. But I don't have that power, so when Fred gets on, yeah, you should make sure that you advocate for that immediately. And I think I have some of stuff here from Fred, so when he speaks, I'll be sure to hand that out to you. But until then, I think we have to move on to the budget, so I'm going to push it back to Chairman Bernstein.
We do have one item before the budget, and we took an eye out for Mr. Pino. So we're going to hold open our recognitions and we're going to move on to an action item. It actually deals with New Lebanon School, this one. Since it's an acting item, I'm going to make a note and put it on the table, and I will have Mr. Walco, which chairs the Building Committee. So the motion is to accept the final accounting through New Lebanon School and offer as the superintendent sign the same, as they're second to that motion. I'm going to go with Ms. Downey, because she followed me on the committee. And with that, Mr. Walco?
Thank you, Mr. Bernstein, members of the Board of Education. I'll be brief. We're trying to wrap up the project. I have also some good news and some accolades I'd like to just share with you regarding the school. So first, just relative to the action item, this is for for us to issue the final accounting. Where, if you recall, the project budget came in in excess of $37 million. We built the project a little under $36 million, and so that money was never used, a little over $1 million, if we report to the RTM. That will be submitted to them as our final, also report to them. And kudos to the professionals who worked on that with us, Gil Bayne, TSKP, and CSG. To that end, I share with you, this is a sort of a continuation from me coming before you the September passed, this last September, regarding our final accounting. And we're here tonight also then to highlight some awards with this school. First and foremost, you should be proud that this school, in fact, is a gold lead standard school. It will be plucked, and that plaque will be being delivered to the school and will be put up in the, I think, the front area for all to see. So we're very proud of that designation and the work that was done. In particular, Brian Harris, who also serves in other capacities in this town, did a really good job at making sure that we obtained that gold standard. Sure, it's a designation of a standard by which how energy-efficient the buildings are, and part of New Lebanon School may be not enough for many of us who are on the project, but still, there's solar votage on the school, and it does produce some power. Again, certainly not enough to run the school, but it does help towards lowering the ongoing costs of the school. We also just received notification from our architect, TSKP Studio, that they received an award for New Lebanon School. They received the Merit Award for under the Commercial, Industrial, Educational, and Multifamily Residential Design category in 2021. So this school now has an architectural award assigned to it, and so we're very proud of that. And so with that, I share with you this good news and ask for your approval.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Wilson?
I just... I just have one question. In just looking over the cost, I was just, what costs are associated with ineligible construction?
We have a standard at the school, so for instance, there are some of the sizes of the footprint of some of the classrooms and other things do not fall in. the footprint of some of the classrooms and other things do not fall into eligible costs. And it's a formulaic that the state uses, and so as you go along the process, there are ineligible costs.
So in other words, the state, you have an option to get reimbursed or try to get reimbursement from the state for those particular costs?
Correct.
Thank you.
Just to add to that, when you design a school, you're trying to make sure that as much of it as possible falls into the eligible bucket. There are certain things the state says are out, and they get one, and these need to have involved. We did our best with that. I guess I'll say my refrain, when I used to give the committee reports on this, on time, under budget. It's a testament to Steve and the whole committee, it was a lot of hard work, which is critical. With that, we're gonna go ahead and take about the motion to accept the final accounting and authorize the superintendent to sign the same. All those in favor? All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Steve.
I want to make congratulations both to Peter and Peter and Gayton again. Thank you for the service to the town. It means a lot to all the parents and the kids that we all send to the schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Steve. I'm still not seeing Fred online. We can either take a recess for a minute and talk about him.
You guys should get a parking pass forever, it was a result of that.
I mean, we can do something.
Right, you want us to put that in the motion? Right. But then they have to be all retiring members going forward.
Oh no, I think it's just those that serve over eight years.
That's fine, I have a parking pass. We've still got a ticket with the parking pass. Still dealing with the issue with the ticket and the parking pass. Fred, where are you?
All right, we're, we're gonna give the first select minimum.
I appreciate the recognition. So, you know, in the interest of progress. I'm sure he can come some other time or something. It was very nice of him to think about recognizing me, I guess it was. I'm sure Peter did the same. But you guys might want to proceed with it.
Yeah, I think we ought to, and if he's still on at the end, we'll give him a moment. Why don't we turn now to what we're all really here for, which is the superintendent's presentation of the 2022, 2023 operating capital budgets.
No, I was gonna say, I love you all dearly, and I hope you enjoy the meeting.
Why are you looking at me? I'm sitting here.
I'm looking at everybody.
I'm so annoyed that I don't have a parking pass.
There's all the electricity that's big.
We're again.
Catch us too.
This is the same stuff we talked about, buddy. It's all different.
It's all different.
Yep. I'm getting you to the Board of Education, to our staff and to the broader community. I'm delighted to be here tonight to present the superintendent's proposed 2022, 2023 operating a capital budget. There is a great deal of work that goes into putting this budget together. And I, before I start, I just want to say thank you to our senior team, who've done a lot of preparation work. We've examined all of our previous and current budgets, examining the need for staffing adjustments. We've gathered new enrollment projection data. We've reviewed an F R estimated fixed costs. We've gathered local state and federal funding information, and we've also examined our academic need. It is a 12-month budget process in Greenwich, and it is unique here. When the budget passes in May, we start immediately, closing out one year, starting another, and building the year after. This year, again, thank you to our finance team, we had a few complexities, also balancing a lot of our COVID grants, which is a good problem to have, and that it is more complex. We start by reflecting and really refining it. Is the budget that we're building gonna meet the needs of our students academically, personally, and interpersonally? We want to make sure everything that's in this budget supports the mission of the district. We look at our achievement results. Are there areas where we could do better? Are there areas where we're doing great? And we look at those results, and we go all the way down to individual schools, individual students. When you look at our student outcome for AP exam, this is one area we like to know how we're doing at the high school level. Last year, we had more advanced placement students in 2021 than we did the year before. However, we gave a few less exams, and we think that's probably attributed to the different way that colleges were accepting students into college last year. The good note is, out of the 828 unique students taking AP exam, 827 passed at least one exam, and that's pretty phenomenal. So congratulations to our teachers and students. We also try to make sure that we're looking at everything beyond the standardized testing. How are our students performing? Certainly, the how are we celebrating them? I'm having two students recognized as finalists in Regeneron Science Talent Search. That's the best in the country. When we look at interpersonal, are we providing everything that we need for our students? And a prime example this year was the addition of social workers in elementary using some of the COVID grant funding. Also with our extracurricular program, we have tremendous sports programs, music programs, our middle school intramural program, and just recently recognized internationally and nationally our electronic music program. So next, we're gonna go through a couple of different areas. Student demographics and enrollment. We'll look at how we spend our budget, the historical budget. What are some of the drivers this year in our budget? And what are some of our budget priorities? So first of all, for student demographics and enrollment. If you look on the top left, what you're seeing is the complete picture of all of the students who must be included in a budget. And when you talk about enrollment, it depends what type of enrollment report you're looking at, what is actually included. So the prepaid number has a small asterisk, because in preschool, which is mandated by federal law, those children start when they are three. So what you're seeing is the total number with typical pairs and students who are found eligible that we expect, where we expect to be at the end of the year, 212 students. When you look at grades nine to 12 plus, this is also including students by federal law who stay with us until they're 22. And the very last line, you're looking at outplace and settlement students, who must be built into the budget, and that actually comes through the tuition line. On the bottom left, what you're seeing are the number of students who qualify for premium. And some of you may remember last year, our bar chart looks a little bit like this. We do not feel that we have fewer students. We are still tracking down paperwork this year. Since the federal government went to free lunches for any student who wants them, it's been much more difficult to get the paperwork from families, but we will continue to work on that right through the end of the year. When you look at our E L numbers, on the top right, we're staying fairly consistent, right in that 4% range. And our graduation rate is consistently 96% or higher. That's one area that will be a target for us going forward. We think we could do better, but we are consistently 96% or higher. This is an student enrollment and history that takes us back to 1963. And when you look at this chart, what you'll notice is that most school districts have a trend that reflects if our enrollment goes up and our enrollment goes down, usually it's tied somehow to what's happening in the economy. The high number on the left was 1970, and we were just over 11,000 students. The peak, or the valley down in the middle, was 1988, where we were 6,453 students. And what you'll see over on the far right is right now, we are sitting right at the historical average. We're not seeing an enormous trend downward, that mean that we would not. But what you see in green is still yet to be determined, and we especially coming out of COVID. Now, I will add just the arrow, that's right before the valley starts. This is a question we get a lot about when we close the school. We closed more than one, but that's when we closed Parkway. And you can see how we were trending down when the decision was made. And then nine years later, when we needed transition space, because hot, hot, hot fire, we had to quickly open it again over a summer. So there are lots of big decisions that have happened since 1963. This chart tells us a lot. This is one of the fastest growing areas for us. Our students who are identified for child crying with special needs preschool. If you look at 2012, we had 48 students. Again, this year, we're anticipated to have 103 special needs students. And this is not only important from a budget standpoint, but it's also very important from a facility standpoint. When you think about 103 preschoolers, that is 13 to 14 classrooms that are no longer available for K5 classes that are taken out of the inventory. So one of the questions we, we have been receiving is, why is enrollment going down? What we're seeing in elementary is a slight decline right now. The state of Connecticut has seen it for about six years. We, we just started seeing it in 2019. We have large graduating classes of 700 who are leaving us, and our incoming kindergarten classes are around 600. So you're just seeing a natural decline, and that has to do with birth rate. What we don't know is what birth rate is going to tell us over the last two years of COVID, because the Connecticut State Department of Health has not been able to provide that, because we're so busy with COVID. So we really don't know going forward what our trend is going to look like. Another question we get is, when enrollment is slightly going down, why do you not just eliminate teachers? And this is a prime example of actual data. This year in 2122, we have 32 fifth grade classrooms with an average of 21 students. Next year, the same fifth grades are going to have an average of 19 students. So although we're losing 64 students, we can't just reduce the teacher on that grade level. Some of our schools that have only two sections, you can't put those two 19s together, because the class would be too large. Now, does that mean we never, ever reduce sections? This is a slide that shows the analysis we do every summer. And we do indeed reduce classroom sections when it makes sense to do so. And in 1617, we had 210 classrooms across K5. As of this year, we were 200. So we had already reduced 10 over the last several years. Going into next year, we anticipate we will be down five more. And it's highly likely, the reason it's so large next year, is we could have lost a section or two this school year, but we couldn't manage the number of students, unfortunately, that's it. So what you're seeing here is just the trend. When you look at enrollment, K5 slightly going down. When you get all the way over to the right, you'll see it just starts to go back up again. In middle school, we're at a peak with larger middle school groups that are moving through, and then they will start to slowly go back down with the smaller elementary, that will start, because we have classes that will move through. Those larger middle school groups are going to the high school, and they're gonna remain high for a couple of years. And right when they start a slight decline, that's when elementary is expected to start going back up again. So now let's look at how we spend our money, our budget expense. So the bulk of our funding is spent on salaries. And what you see down on the bottom in purple, which is the purchase services and other, the two items that make up that 10.9% are transportation and tuition. So those two items alone are the bulk of our budget. How do we spend the salary dollars? We've made a concerted effort to put our money in the classroom where our children are. So we are at over 90% of our classroom support for salaries. Our administration, we've been trying to draw up, we're down at 2.74, and we're very proud about that. We want our money to be spent where our teachers and our children are. For transportation, the largest portion is what you see in blue, and that is the public school transportation. We have our special needs transportation at 26%, which is the yellow. And then we have private schools, and if you don't know, we do run all the blessing for the private schools, and that's 18% of the total transportation budget. One aspect to note is that we do have our transportation out with a RFP right now. It closes on the number 18. So if we go through the budget process, we'll learn more about what are bus company going forward, it's going to look like for competitive grid. There's not a lot of change in school lunchtime. Obviously, we have receipts that are in blue, are over 3 million. And then we have our reimbursements that you see in red on the top left at 900,000. On the bottom right, the two largest expenses that we have for food service is personnel, just over 2 million. And then obviously, our food and our purchasing at 1.6. When we look at some of our historical budget trend, this is a slide we've shown the last couple of years. When you go back to that point, well, sorry, at 2002, 2003, our budgets were around that 4% mark, and what that meant was that we were able to fund all of our salary increases, our fixed costs, increases in transportation, and we could sustain professional development and buy textbooks and the things that we needed for our students. Then we went into a decade of decline, where the funding was closer to the 2%. And what happens at a 2%, especially in a bargaining state like Connecticut, that is not enough to cover just salary obligations alone, which are contractual, as well as the actual increases in fixed costs. We were delighted this year, in 2122, you'll see that 3.97 over on the far right, to have a budget that helps us restore, which is making a tremendous difference this year in our schools, just in curriculum and professional development alone. And I think you've seen that over the last school board meetings, some tremendous work going on in curriculum. Some of the budget drivers, special education tuition has been trending up. We've talked a lot about this on the Board of Education. We're hoping next year, it's starting to level out. Obviously, during the budget discussions, we'll talk more about this. But this is a very interesting, where Greenwich is located, we have a lot of private schools in and around us. And if a student is already on an outplacement from their district, and they move into Greenwich, we are seeing more students who have never stepped foot in our schools, because they are now our students, and we must absorb that into the tuition line. So we'll have again more discussion about that during the budget process. When you look at the utilities budget, utilities are always a driver. Electric service is obviously the largest utility that we have, 2.4 million is what we're anticipating for 22, 23. But what I will say is, while they're fixed costs, that doesn't mean we can't do anything. And this is full credit to Shawna P. and also to Dan Watson. Over the last two years, we have worked for our environmental and sustainability focus to implement ever-source lighting projects. By the end of 22, we will have completed eight of our buildings. And the significance of that is that the long-term savings in the master plan for lighting is three to four million alone. And once our 48-month installments are complete, we should see annual savings of almost $700,000 in our electric. So this is a very, very positive implementation for us. Now, when we look at our budget priorities, first of all, we have just gone through a study with Public Consulting Group for special education, and there were 28 recommendations. So this year, we want to make sure we are full steam ahead and doing exactly what the Board of Education and community asks us to do, and get the recommendations implemented. We want to enhance math intervention at cross elementary schools. We want to have our inclusion specialists for programming, and again, these are children. And again, these are children who are included in the general education environment, and the teachers need assistance understanding how to set individualized program for me for the children. We want to increase co-teaching in elementary and secondary. We've made huge strides this year in doing that by just readjusting some of the existing positions that we have. We also want to in implement a unique learning program for upper elementary. And these are students who are on an alternate pathway, alternate curriculum currently in Greenwich. We do not have any programming. Which means that if a student needs a alternate halfway unique program, the only option we have is to look for school outside of the district. We also want to implement a reading lab teacher for critical cases, the top one percent of students. Who are really having significant reading disabilities, and this is a position that we are repurposing from the existing position. Our curriculum focused areas and operations for next year, great refundations. And I know a lot of our parents are excited that not only do we have a much stronger um base in scientifically based uh research for early literacy. But there's also a Percy writing component, which in Greenwich, our parents said was very important. Um, the curriculum focus for six to eight in this budget uh is writing for next year for high school. Grades nine through twelve English and social studies individual courses. Social studies will be a two-year implementation just due to the number of different forces that we have. Also, we want to increase custodial staffing by two point oh. Uh, again, we talked about this last year, um, tried to make that happen. We cut two custodial positions several years ago. And since then, we've even added additional square footage. We also believe the addition of two custodial staff are going to help us with all the overtime and experiencing. We also want me to uh obviously fund our special education tuition increase of half million dollars. And meet our contractual salary obligation at three million. We consolidate our services with the town of Greenwich, and we're very proud of the working relationship that our Greenwich Public Schools have with the town of Greenwich staff. We at GPS run the print shop. We run that for the town of Greenwich and we run that uh for our school. The town of Greenwich does all of our field maintenance and our outside. But we consolidate where it makes sense and we don't where it doesn't. We are two very different entities, but we do value our consolidated services. These are all of our community partners, and I don't, I would be remiss if I didn't mention them tonight. They bring thousands upon thousands of dollars into Greenwich Public Schools, supporting not only the schools but our families. And I will say um during COVID, it became even more important and more evident. How supportive our community partners are. This is very unique to Greenwich, and we should be extremely proud uh that we have all of these partnerships. So the proposed operating budget for twenty-two, twenty-three, in order to accomplish all of that is one hundred and seventy-six million, four hundred and three thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars. It's an increase over the twenty-one, twenty-two operating budget of two point six five percent or four point five million. Again, when you look at the budget driver letter plan, and you take just these six items. You have salaries and contractual payments are three million of that increase. Special education tuition is a half a million. Utilities and services, ninety-six thousand transportation, a half a million. And then again, we do have an RFP, we'll be looking closely at that number. Summer school, we are adding three hundred thousand dollars back in for the FY uh twenty-two, twenty-three summer school to make sure that that's fully funded. That leaves a hundred thousand for everything else. So what that means is if we didn't go into the budget. And really very carefully look at every line item of the budget, we couldn't accomplish everything that we've built into this budget. We're very proud of it. So when you look at the superintendent's proposed budget, it's two point six five percent. It contains all of the PCG recommendation for special education. It does have a net add of five point O FTE, but we've done that within the budget we've been given by really looking closely at what we can. Make uh work within the budget, and that is exactly where the B E T guidance asked us to be was at two point six five percent. So now we're going to look at the proposed capital budget. First of all, this is a reminder, the facilities master plan is our historical document that we use. When and we look at it every summer as we start looking at capital. It was, it was conducted in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. It has the master plan for organization process that the Board of Education went through to determine the order of the projects. It was based on capacity, security, ADA compliance, air quality, and next generation learning. And the board adopted those priorities on June fourteenth of twenty eighteen. When you look at the facilities master plan online, it is on our webpage. There are two components. The left side is the master plan. You'll see a picture of the school if it exists. There's a rendering that's not a design. It's just a possibility of what could happen in a building. And then on the bottom left is a number if you were going to go in and do a brand new build. On the right hand side, what you're seeing is basic infrastructure. So you don't take the left and add to the right. If on the left side, you don't do a brand new building and you do a renovation. And for instance, you don't do the lining or you're done doing flooring. The only thing that would come off the right side are the items that still need to be done in the future. And that's been a big misunderstanding, I think, over the last couple of years. The facilities master plan is a planning tool. It's a communication tool for the community to understand our needs. What it is not, it's not an engineering study of all of our buildings. It's not a static document. It changes every year. If something doesn't get funded, we have to figure out where it's going to put in. It's not a precise estimate of cost, and it's not actual design. They're just rendering of what could be. And it's not a predictor of unknown variables. So the study didn't open walls and look for wiring, look in ceilings. This is a master plan that was looking at what we need to be done in our building at a basic architectural level. Our five-year prioritization that we're proposing is different. It's more aggressive than it has been in the past. We know the board will have lots of discussion about this. When we look at the original master plan, if you just look at those four projects which are almost pressing, the total of the master plan is two hundred and fifty-eight million. That's over. When you look at what's being currently proposed, Joy and Curtis and Old Greenwich have both gone through feasibility that have brought that number down significantly. We have applied the same logic to the Riverside number and to Central Middle School. We do believe Central Middle School, we need to be more aggressive. Otherwise, um, it's going to be a challenge for us to be pushing that out. And when you look at that uh right-hand column, what you've seen is the current proposed projects will be at one hundred and fifty-two million. Just central alone in the original master plan, this one to be a hundred and twenty-five. So we're hoping we can have some positive discussion uh about how we can manage capital uh in a more aggressive way. And again, all four of these buildings will have building committees and have construction management. So one other aspect about prioritization, when you talk about air quality, ADA capacity, security, next generation learning. I think it's important to mention that with our three elementary schools, just noting the year that they were constructed. Julian Curtis Curtis was nineteen forty-six, and we have not done anything in that building. Old Greenwich was nineteen oh two. We've had a few renovations. Riverside had a small renovation and it was built in nineteen thirty-two. But we will, we also have to take into consideration for next generation learning. Was title one legislation uh came in nineteen sixty-five. That's why we have reading specials. That's why we have math specialists. But again, our buildings were all built free title one legislation, so we don't have the small spaces that we need for reading specialists. Nineteen seventy-four was special education as we know it today, uh, public law ninety-four, one, four, two. So now we need special education teachers. We need speech teachers, OT, occupational therapy, physical therapy. We need psychologists. Again, all of our elementarys were built before any of that was needed. In just twenty fifteen, we have a reauthorization of our English language learners. We also need space for our EL teacher. So it's important when we talk about next generation learning to understand how the buildings are utilized. And I encourage you in the budget book, there's a map of Julian Curtis to look and see that every single classroom is utilized. And several of the classrooms have three teachers and two teachers working in them. And last but not least, just programmatically, areas like music, uh, general music and string. It takes two spaces now, not one. So the major projects that we are requesting for this year are Julian Curtis and Old Greenwich to move forward for architectural, engineering, and design. On a parallel pathway. We're also recommending that cargo field continue with phase two. You'll notice cargo stadium is slightly higher, and that is because we're including the soil work that we discovered in phase one was needed. Um, and the town was able to work with us on that, but we want to build in some native deal with the soil. There is a note on the bottom, why you're not seeing Western Middle School. Um, as you know, we've talked about this the last couple of years. Once DE and EPA sign off on our middle school remediation plan, we will go um straight to that funding. Uh, bring that to the Board of Education, take that to the B E T that has been reflected of us over the last two years. And um, we are meeting regularly on that project. Where we do see a lot of work is our annual infrastructure. When you look at the mechanical, electrical, plumbing at ten point eight million from the orange on the top left. And ADA on the, on the top right, those are two major areas for us, also the envelope of the building, which is um the red portion. And again, all of those are broken down in great detail inside the budget book, which will also be put online, have those in the community to be able to see. So our major projects are nine point six million, which is a little less than we were last year. Annual infrastructure is at twenty-six million, a little more than last year. Technology is one point seven, but one point one million of that is the one major project. Food service, that's just some equipment, and then of course for security that we see on annual basis to make sure we keep our buildings safe. So the capital budget next step, the board uh will make decisions and vote in December. The first selectman uh will publish this budget in January twenty-two. And then the B E T will adopt the capital plan in April. It gets to the RTM in May. So again, it's a very long process to get through the budget. So just to recap, our operating budget request is two point six five percent, which is exactly what the guidelines were for us. But beyond that, it's doing what we think we need for the school district, and we feel like it's a very responsible and strong budget for our students and staff. The capital budget is at thirty-seven point eight million. And with that, I say thank you. We do have a Board of Education meeting on December second where we discuss the budget. Thank you.
On the budget.
All right, try now, Peter.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Jones, for the budget presentation. That was great. A lot of information absorbed. I'll leave the slide as well as the budget book will be posted online. Morning, Mike wasn't already cut it. Very efficient. Um, and it will be featured budget meetings for the board to have some discussion on this before you vote on it after the December meetings. So, plenty of opportunity for feedback and discussion. With that, uh, does any board member have any questions on the budget?
Just, um, are we doing the whole Google Meet document again when we ask our questions? Do you have that? Is that the plan?
Yeah, so as we did in the past, submit your questions to Dr. Jones. Uh, as you do it, she will create a living, living document that the staff can start updating and. So everybody can see, so there's not competitive questions. I think that's what we're going to post.
I just want to talk about the timelines for that, because I know we have Thanksgiving and another bunch of meeting and what would work. Ideally for you, Dr. Jones, in terms of, you know, kind of at least first round, everybody works better with a deadline, myself included. So if you give us a date that you would like the first round of questions, that would be supremely helpful.
Uh, you know, ideally, if you get time to really dig into the budget and start your questions um to have them in by Friday the nineteenth so that we can start. Because it takes a while just to pollate all of the questions. Um, so that would be the first round. And then uh after Thanksgiving, trying to get, you know, the second round in if we get those answered and posted.
Just the next budget meeting is December second.
Right, because we don't talk about the budget at our November meetings, I just wanted to get some time.
That's already the agenda. All right, if there's nothing else with the budget, uh, I do want to revert back to recognize our first selectman Fred Camillo. Fred, you should know that while you were gone, uh, we talked about you and we think the parting board members should all get the time parking passes in perpetuity. Uh, and just so you know, Mr. Share uh is absent from the room, so. So there you go. So go ahead, Fred.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize. I was caught between a couple of meetings, but uh thanks to a. A BOE member, Joe Kelly, for uh calling me in the middle of a traffic jam to uh demand that I uh speak, but uh my uh. Better uh judgment got a, you know, took hold there, and I said, I'll call later, and I got to listen to the budget, so that all turned out well, and uh. Thanks and good evening, everybody. Uh, I have two proclamations uh for our two retiring members. I will start first with the chairman, uh, Peter Bernstein, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, thanks for all your service for, for the many years on the board, both as a member and as chairman. Um, it's certainly a, a job that sometimes can be thankless and uh. Uh, you know, it's one of the three along with the BET and the, and P and Z that uh really is tough on, on our volunteers and. Uh, to be a, a chairman is a even more uh of a, of, you know, a challenge. And I really, uh, along with everybody in town, thank you for your efforts there. So I will uh read the proclamation for you first. Whereas Peter Bernstein is recognized for his two terms as a member of the Board of Education. And whereas he faithfully served the residents of Greenwich and the Greenwich Public Schools. Whereas Peter served as Board of Education Chair from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-one. And whereas he served on the New Lebanon School Building Committee. And whereas Peter served on the Board, Board's Negotiations Committee. Now therefore I, Fred Camilla, first electman of the town of Greenwich, do hereby proclaim Thursday, November fourth, two thousand twenty-one. As Peter Bernstein Day in the town of Greenwich and urge all our citizens to join me in recognizing Peter's years of dedication. And service to the Board of Ed- Education and our community. Peter, thanks again, and best of luck to you and all your future endeavors.
Thank you, Fred. You waited until now. There's only four hours left. Can we get TV to where I get the avenue prosos so I can drive the wrong way?
We can talk about that, but not tonight. But thank, again, thanks for all your service. Uh, it's really greatly appreciated and uh will be remembered. And uh, I know uh Peter Scher has left, uh, but I will read his proclamation. Uh, Peter also was a, was a board chair in two thousand seventeen. Whereas Peter Scher is recognized for his three terms as member of the Board of Education. And whereas he faithfully served the residents of Greenwich and the Greenwich Public Schools. And whereas Peter served as Board of Education Chair in twenty seventeen. And whereas he served as Chair of the Negotiations Committee. And whereas Peter served as Chair of the Strategic Plan Committee. Now therefore I, Fred Camilla, first electman of the town of Greenwich, do hereby proclaim Friday. Or should, should be Thursday, November fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, it's Peter Scher Day in the town of Greenwich and urge all citizens to join me in celebrating and recognizing Peter's contributions to the BOE and our community. Uh, but since today was your day, we will make it the, the fifth of Friday. So Peter, I know, I don't know if you're listening, um, but thank you for all your service. And especially in twenty seventeen, I know you were there when we uh did the New Lebanon School. Uh, we got that passed in Hartford and certainly this board's efforts were critical and that, and you were chair at that time. So uh, thank you very much, and uh we wish you all well in your uh future endeavors.
All right. Thank you very much, Fred. Really appreciate the kind words. Uh, I'm sure Peter appreciates them as well. That is, that is the end of our meeting. Uh, I'm just going to say thank you very much uh to the citizens of the town for putting your trust in me and allowing me to serve. Uh, for eight years, the last was chair. Uh, it's been an interesting ride, especially the past couple of years. You know, I just want to say I hope civility is restored in town. We uh, we all come together. Uh, these are not easy times in education and otherwise. Greenwich is a great place and uh everyone paying back the education my kids are getting. I hope everybody had the uh, the great experience of my students uh in my house and the students who perform as I've signed up the past four years of that. So thank you all very much. And with that, I am going to make the most of your journey. I was going to let Mr. Share second that, but uh, Dr. Francis, I think you've earned the watch. Dr. Francis, you're second. All right. All those in favor of a dream? Seven zero unanimous vote. Look at that. Both we work well together. Thank you very much and have a good evening.